All for the June meeting of the Town Council of Washington, Virginia. This will be the first. Well, let me adopt our agenda. I will move into the meeting, so. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda for tonight?
Motion.
One more do you want a second?
I'm sorry.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Minutes from the May 13th Town Council meeting. Get a motion to approve those minutes. And a second? New discussion. Is there any, uh, broken, ongoing, any corrections?
Yeah, I see that.
Okay. Jean admitting dramatic errors of distinction. So, um, I guess we'll move on to Mayor's report. First, I have reports very good to be back. My treatment wrapped up just three weeks ago. I won't go for a little while, just complete outcome, but my doctor's not very optimistic that I have a full recovery, so no more of the fall, but it's good to be through it. And to be back. I think, otherwise, I think we're going to propose and discuss it further around. We propose tonight we have a town social ahead of the concert at Avon Hall on the sixth, so that afternoon we'll have a repeat of last year's ice cream social here at Town Hall. Discuss that a little bit more when we get into these. Nice, nice way to kick off the evening's festivities, so more involved on that. That's all my doubt from Mayor's report. Work continues pace on our Brad Knight perpetual project of water and sewer things, but we're going to make some good progress this summer, so. Already things in motion. That's it for the Twitter. That's not matter.
Thank you. We just moved some more money up to the LGIP as Joe calls it the rainy day fund, and we have just short of eight hundred thousand, seven ninety-seven, eight forty-five. So, thanks to everybody, and especially our town manager for keeping her thumb on the budget.
So that will turn around, we spent on expanding our services to.
So what we did was, all of the fees that we got from Russian River for water and sewer, we were able to immediately put up in the LGIP, which is getting excellent. I think the last time I checked, a couple days ago, we were getting five point six percent interest. So, everything's up there. I can pull it down for us whenever we need anything to do on the water and sewers. Good, and I do need the approval for the release of Q1 funds. I'll make that pending budget. I'll get that done on the way down to the.
I'm just going to use a C for first.
Yeah. So, I would like to make a motion if we release the.
On the way to a move on. We'll do it comparatively with the passage of the budget. Okay, fair enough. Yes, I know I didn't mention. That's, that's, that's okay. Heard. Mr. Crimble.
Thank you, Mayor. Wanted to report to you that voluntary settlement agreement process went very well, and the record has now flowed, meaning there are no initial records of the Commission on Local Government that we'll be considering, because that's what they already have, and we expect to get the report by the end of June with the Commission on Local Government being on the line in the fall. So, I don't, I'm not seeing any problems.
Mr. Crimble.
You have my report in front of you. I think probably the most important part of my report is that we're working for the four seventy fields that we're waiting for an appointment for a four seventy field number, and once we have that, actually, we need to.
Should have mentioned that in our report. We are still looking for a member of the four zoning appeal, so if any resident is interested, please, Commander, letter of interest of the council.
Other than that, it's quite safe, sort of like, not, uh, so much about.
John Corrigan.
I might be looking. I must look to you.
Thanks. I know we'll get, we'll get to talk a little bit more tonight, so. Chairman, important planning commission.
Well, we, we just, fifty-five minutes ago, and we discussed about there are additions to the B and B ordinance, and we decided to, not to be in this. And that's it.
Report on. And did he have a report, Mayor?
They're not meeting this, they have an application.
Okay. All right, well, I think that takes us down to, to our new business, first off, which is a public hearing on Miss Platts supplemental submission for seventy-eight P. Mon Avenue. Down the strip here to get us into that, into that public hearing. So, we are holding a public hearing tonight for a special use permit request for seventy-eight P. Mon Avenue, request of Joan C. Platt trustee for a special use permit for accessory apartment and adaptive reuse of an existing structure. We will take public comments during the hearing. The planning commission will jointly hold its public hearing with us. I'll briefly explain the rules for these public hearings and then invite the planning commission chair to call the planning commission to order. The purpose of a public hearing is to hear from interested members of the community about the advisability of issuing this special use permit. Speakers may, must direct their comments to the council and the planning commission, not the audience. Madam Chairman, and I invite you to call the planning commission to order.
Thank you, Mayor. I call the planning commission to order. Form is present. I now open the planning commission's public hearing on the proposed special use permit described by the man.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I now open the Town Council's public hearing on the same matter. You will first hear a presentation by Steve Guyerson, the Town Zoning Administrator, after which I will invite members of the public to present your comments. Mr. Guyerson.
Thank you. I'll be brief, this applicant. Wonderful work with, I've got all the information that needed to proceed to this point. So, it's a special use permit for accessory apartment, which I understand was an apartment in that building quite some time ago, and it also is special, same special use or special use permit for consideration of a studio in the existing order. Really, I don't have any many conditions to recommend from the planning commission. There's a plaque attached to your documents that show where the building, where the houses and where the additions are proposed for the apartment. Parking space is probably the most visible feature of special use permit in the area where you have a large apartment that's essentially, essentially, I don't know anything else that you have.
Thanks, sir. With that, I will now open the hearing to public comments. Madam Chair.
Let me call on my fellow commissioners to see if anybody has any comments.
Okay, we read out their comments. Seems very straightforward.
Any comments from the council?
Just so that I did look at property in terms of water and sewer. What changes are there, maybe not in conflict or the.
Challenged.
No, not challenged, but a little over the top maybe, so I'm not expected one.
So, I would then propose a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor? Aye.
A motion is now in order for the council to close its public hearing.
Much motion.
Yes, sir. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Aye.
So, we are not making any, any type of recommendations to the Town Council, except that we believe it should be approved. I move to approve the application for a special use permit at seventy-eight P. Mon Avenue at the request of Joan C. Platt trustee for accessory apartment and adoptive reuse of an existing structure. Do I have a second? All in favor? Aye.
Thank you, Mayor. Does any member of the Town Council wish to make a motion?
So, we accept this present.
Do I have a second? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. I think the, yeah, the patient is approved. Congratulations. Those four is in. All right, and now we'll move on to the second item for our public hearing. We are holding a public hearing tonight to amend the Town of Washington, Washington, Virginia zoning ordinance, Article One, Creation of Zoning Districts, Section One dash four, Uses by Special Use Permit, and Article fourteen, Definitions, by considering a new category of bed and breakfast, bed and breakfast definitions for the existing and the new, I'm sorry, existing, adding to the required standards for the existing B and B category and required standards for the new category of B and B allowed under the special use permit process in specific zoning districts. We will take public comments during the hearing. The planning commission will jointly hold its public hearing with us. As previously stated, the purpose of a public hearing is to hear from interested members of the community about the advisability of issuing this special use permit, or in this case, altering the zoning ordinance. Speakers must direct their comments to the council and planning commission, not the audience. Madam Chairman, and I invite you to open the planning commission's public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I now open the planning commission's public hearing on proposed zoning ordinance amendment regarding bed and breakfasts established.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I now open the Town Council's public hearing on the same matter. You will first hear a presentation by Steve Guyerson, the Town Zoning Administrator, after which I will invite members of the public to present their comments.
Mr. Mayor, we have a proposal for, it's spelled out in the ordinance for amendments to the zoning ordinance, to create two categories of B and Bs. One is five, basically five, with specific standards. Another that is B and B type two, that's listed as ten rooms, up to ten rooms, with specific standards. Both allowed for a professional manager in those standards, and both are proposed in variety of zoning districts. The planning commission discussed this just a few minutes ago, and they have some recommendations for the bottom of the public hearing, but that's the bottom line of the ordinance amendments. They're basically going on for probably about five or six months, and working with Town Attorney and the planning commission for types of B and Bs.
Thank you, Mr. Guyerson. At this point, I would note that we have two operators of, of B and Bs and ends of various sizes in town on the council, and I would invite them to either make a conflict interest statement here or to, they will, they will.
I'm already signed my conflict interest statement, and I will recuse myself from voting.
I'm sorry, I.
Sorry, I will.
The voters didn't hear that.
I will recuse myself from voting because of the potential perceived conflict of interest. I've signed my statement. With regard to zoning text amendment for B and Bs, I am a member of a group affected by the transaction of adult only affected business that I am able to disprove the transaction fairly objectively in a public manner.
Thank you, sir. I will now open the hearing for public comments. Please rise and be recognized. Yes, sir. Identify yourself.
Name is Evan Adams, owner at Foster Harris House. Thank you, council and planning commission, for allowing us to review this amendment. We, as I've reviewed the ordinance and spoken with, with the zoning, zoning leader, Mr. Steve Guyerson, over the last few months, it's been a wonderful process of learning his, history of the town and, and how it reads. The property at Foster Harris House, as an example, is one that has been constructed with really ten, ten separate bedrooms, and where the, where the, our, our professional manager, our Washington resident, lives in a portion of those, our influence would be to utilize a, what has been for years, a handful of vacant en suites to the capacity the property already is. So, in, in our world, that means we're not building these structures, we're utilizing the twelve existing parking spaces that are in our lot, and in, in reflection as well of, we have a, a special use permit that's, that's been approved previously for up to twenty guests for dinner service at the property, which I know took, just took consideration the, what type of, I even use the word noise that could create at the property there. And so, with a few precedents like that, and, and building relationships with our, our neighbors, albeit just over the last couple of weeks, we want to do well for the community and listen to, you know, any considerations we can make, but would love to be able to have the Foster Harris House considered as, as an inn that could, that could use more than just five rooms as something to, right now.
Thank you, sir. Your comments will be public.
Jim Abdo, we own some properties in town here, as well as White Newstead. Nothing major, just like thirty-five thousand feet. I just want to come as a new zone administrator, just to create some, a step in the right direction for buy right abuses and relations to these properties, provides a level certainty for future landowners and people that are here in the town that know what they can do with the properties, and for that, I'm very appreciative.
One last.
John Sullivan, town resident. I think this is extremely important, serious discussion, and I think anytime when one approaches rezoning and rezoning issues, that one should spend a lot of time thinking about it and debating. And I think this is sort of the first time the public has actually been able to hear anything really about this subject. I may miss, I may a little bit, but this is the first time it's been. And as one, when I was mayor, was generally in the category of encouraging new thinking and expansion and growth and what have you. And with reference to Foster Harris House, the Town Council changed a lot of rules or dealt with the situation where Foster Harris wanted to do things that were not readily easy to do, and there was a lot of discussion about it, a lot of debate, and for a lot of reasons, we decided it served for them, they could do this, they could do that. But if all those discussions were in the context of, this is a building that's in a village residential area, which there are neighbors, and was that issue appropriate or not? That's just fact, and I know that's not relevant really today, but that's fact. I think the notion of having what were once considered bed and breakfast become, whatever you want to call them, small hotels, is a big deal in this town, and I think it's really important, I might get the idea, but I think it's really important as to where those buildings might be located. And I'm really skeptical of the notion of such buildings being what are kind of clearly residential, heritage, and indeed, zoned as such, zoned as residential. And the, the notion of being able to roughly double the size of people raises questions which, sort of, perhaps, but whether it's parking, or whether it's all the kinds of things that one gets to do, but I think fundamentally, in a common sense sort of way, there is a difference between eight or ten, let's say, people in bed and breakfasts in a residential area, which they had a good special permit for, upping that to fifteen, sixteen, seventeen max, eighteen, let's say, max, to you. That's a big change, and I think it's something you should consider really seriously, which I presume you are. I don't know all the conversations we're going to have along, I don't know all the legal aspects of zoning, or lawyers think about the subject. And I will not get to the obvious, the obvious for some of you. I am a neighbor, and I've always been pretty accommodating as to what people do in the town, if not, or expect to be. But I'm not sure, I really, it gets, you're talking about zoning, but if you get to a specific issue, and this might come up, I'm not sure how comfortable I am with the notion of a lot of people sitting outside making all the noises, but I can handle it. It's just a selfish, self-interested, I think. As it is, I can hear Mr. Abdo's guests were three times away from my criticizing you, having fun out with Porsche, right? And I supported you all along in everything. I want it, I want business, I want whatever, I'm sort of, but there is sort of, and there are other neighbors who can speak themselves, who are like really close to this building, and, or if somebody, only because I happen to be lucky and true, and I love him dearly, if he wanted to do something like this on that small street, I would think like, you got to be kidding me, in terms of, is that appropriate in a commonsensical, common way to something that's in a residential street? I just don't have to think of this. So, I just encourage you to tread carefully here and think it through, and I could be, I'm able to change my mind once of it, but I just sort of wanted to express both the general point and the specific. Here.
Thank you. I think that, I think the planning commission, which is to make a proposal. Okay, yeah, okay. A motion is in order to close the public hearing. Thank you. I couldn't see if this came from that one. You're ready, it's much easier to see. I think you would be need to close it.
I will. You have a motion. I'll, I'll.
Do, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? Second. All in favor? Aye.
Motion is now in order for the council to close its public hearing. I have a motion. Second. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Public, public hearing is closed. Now, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. I think the, the planning commission would like to make a motion, and, and I'm going to try and avoid it, but Martin, I'm going to need some, some help here. I move to recommend to the Town Council that the lawyer, our lawyer and the, our zoning administrator should be instructed to work on some words to move forward with the concept of a second category of inn or bed and breakfast to be restricted to the village mixed-use zoning area, and that second category would, the ordinance would include specifics such as a nine-room max and the, the existing footprint. I think, and, and the issue of professional manager. With those three issues included, planning commission would move, we could move to buy right, but it would need to be restricted to village mixed-use. In other words, all B and Bs in village residential zones should abide by the original ordinance and the number five. Do I have someone to second that motion?
Second, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. So, we have about three in favor and one up second.
This public hearing part of the, of our agenda, and I welcome, I think, excuse themselves a bit, but like, thank you for your, your work and recommendations. Okay, so we have, included the public hearing, we have a recommendation from the planning commission about possible changes to the ordinance, creating a second category of bed and breakfasts, which we've been discussing now for a little over two months, maybe three months at this point, on the agenda. The team had prepared in advance of this a revised zoning text, which was in, which was in the Town Council's packet. I think it goes a, a fair way toward some of the things that the commission has raised. Given that, I feel like it would probably make the text amendments, in the sense that the council would make those text amendments as we're in motion tonight and go ahead and forward, so, you know, with the, the help of our senior council and our zoning administrators, consider the, the recommendations from the planning commission and take action on them or not, as we.
I'm confused. My understanding is the planning commission is going to come back after, after Martin and Steve get together?
No, it's solely at our, our discretion at this point. They, they made their recommendation that the council can act as, as instead of this point, so we have two options. We can ask Martin and Steve to take the revised text they already presented to us and go away and come back and see us in July with some specifics, or we can go ahead and just make those changes now while we're presenting our talk before willing to accept the recommendations of the planning commission. So, we'll clean up any if, than's and us's in the, in the ordinance, but we can go ahead and say yes, we're in favor. We can consider those individual motions that they made and decide whether we're in favor or not, and, and look at the, forward tonight, rather than asking them to go off and take them. So, I, I would prefer if we just went ahead and went and deal with it.
So, we are voting to accept recommendation from the planning commission with all of the updated provisions that we're handling before.
How, we can consider them one by one, and maybe discuss them.
See, I'm still confused, because I thought the recommendation was that Martin and Steve get together and come up with new wording. That, that was what I understood. Is that what you understood, Martin?
That is the recommendation, but Mayor suggesting that you not follow the recommendation and instead adopt the ordinance.
I, I'm suggesting we follow the recommendations, but that we make those amendments tonight while we're in session, not as asking, asking to struggle.
But we don't allow that their recommendation to not.
We, we can, we can vote on their recommendations tonight.
But that recommendation was that Martin and Steve talked.
No, 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 my, my point being, they made four distinct recommendations to us. We can act on those recommendations, or we can ask Martin and Steve and Steve to go write them up nicely and present them back to us in July. We have the option to do either. I don't know that we need to wait for them to pretty up the language in July. If we agree with, with suggestions from the planning commission, then we can just go ahead and act and maybe we'll make sure it looks perfect in the final version, but allows us to go ahead and deal with it.
You're going to. So, you're going to discuss each of the four ones?
Correct. And then we have a discussion about the four, decide whether... We have to do that anyway, whether we do it now in July, so we can have a discussion whether we accept all four or whether we have different ways we want Martin and Steve to write it up based on our own looks. It just allows us to go ahead and work through that process rather than having...
So, then they would...
Yeah, the final version, they will make sure that it's legally appropriate and in principle, reasonable language. That would be my preference, to go ahead and deal with it. So, even if we do have to talk about it in July, it'll be a yes, that's what we ask July. Rather than have an extended debate in July.
Yeah, I don't know if I would generally agree with what the commission suggested. And so I would be favorable to say yes. And then in July, we'd get a revised document.
For final test.
We can take a look at it, make sure there isn't anything that jumps out.
Any questions about the recommendations of the Planning Commission? And just to revisit, I would say note that in the draft, it already happened for us. We were requiring a defining professional manager, so we already raised the bar on that. We did realize that there was a type of draft error, which may be denied or it was instead of ten, which was in the draft that the team had prepared for us. We would say that anyone who wishes to do this, and it is an open process, would have to apply for rezoning into a village mixed-use zone to be able to go up to this limit and go through zoning process. But otherwise, once that's completed, if it's approved rezoning, then they would be able to go ahead and execute the shift. It becomes by right at that point.
Quip, quip.
And that it has to be an existing building, which I think roundly is what our whole just about we don't want. They need to sort of add on, add on, you know, buy a little salt box in town to be by them and endlessly add to it.
Mayor, I'm also... What I'm hearing you say is that we would come back with a final draft language.
Correct, yes. I just want to make sure that we're agreeing in principle of...
Right, because there are some other things we need to clean up, like the antipathy that is adequate to make an argument specify.
We'll look forward to those technical and continuing as... And also, I think we are very clear in the language that initially proposed that we, as a council, want to balance this idea of residential versus commercial in town. And that obviously that's a big part of the debate about zoning is whether we want something to change for any additional requests to shift residential to the neighborhood. I would note, being on Main Street, it is a... It's an unusual thing to be on Main Street in town because we do have some residential areas that are mixed right of commercial areas, and that's an unusual sort of fact of life on our Main Street. Intercursed with commerce all down Main Street. Yes, sir.
If we had an applicant that was going to require a zoning revision...
I'm sorry, Brad, can you speak a little more to that?
A second. If we had an applicant that is going to require a zoning revision, it's not insurance that they're going to get that zoning revision.
No, I wasn't saying that. I said it's an open process to apply.
To apply.
And they go through the process in a fair... Proceed a fair hearing to change.
So, it could come back if we say no, we're not...
Of course, yeah. It's not tied in the hands of the Planning Commission.
And may I ask in zoning, rezoning one property, is it the entire street that would... Or if you rezone, you can spot zone?
Yeah, exactly.
Which used to not be allowed, but now it is.
I'm not aware of any non-allowed spots.
You're asking, is it have to be discussed in the initial?
They're considered as equal generations. To my knowledge, there is no in the ordinance because there's no restriction on zoning particular property. That's the consensus of the town, the planning commission, et cetera, to do that. And partly for now, it is something that uniforms, I mean, we've had a push on that to say we want to like things to be in liked zones, which is not traditionally been the case, but...
I think that the issue would be if you had a spot down zoning, that could be seen as particularly inconsistent with the plan and can be seen as invalid. But a spot up zoning, to the extent it's consistent with the plan, is perfectly...
It would still need to be approved?
Absolutely, no, no.
We have a public hearing.
Yes, no, no, there's a process and there's not... There is no location.
There's no automaticity, it's right there.
I apologize if you were left under that impression for your... I think you were left under that impression for your...
Oh, many times.
Sure.
Many times, that was the rule.
Okay, so I think we have a way forward. We've rounded the recommendations of the Planning Commission. We will rely on our staff to come back to us with a final version and pass it when I vote for the community in July. So, I would entertain a motion to instruct the staff to do that draft and bring it back to us in July. That's second? Okay, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right.
All right? Who's the matter for tonight? At this point, we, after a much long debate, we have to add a final passage of our budget for 2004, 2005. That will start... That budget starts on July 1st.
Yes.
Which is going to make the time. I would ask, as part of a motion to approve that budget, I assume our treKK is going to make it that we also go ahead and approve the release of the first quarter funds of that budget so that the town can go ahead and take action on it. Madam Trekk, would you like to make a motion?
I just made it. I'll second.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Our budget is adopted. Thank you for all the work for the last several months on that. We do have to... There have been some updates directed by the Commonwealth to our remote participation policy. Barbara, do you want to... Any highlights you want to hit from that and Martin?
So, yeah, the General Assembly tweaked this. This is, I think, the fifth or sixth change in the remote participation policy since 2020. And so, in a lot of ways, it expands the ability to use remote participation. Really critical change is not something we've seen it for, is that if you have a disability or you are a caretaker for a relative with a disability, you can not only participate as many times as you need to remotely, but you cannot towards the core. So, that's a move.
That's great.
Yeah, so it is really going a long way to encourage involvement in public life by people who might otherwise be prohibited due to a disability or a loved ones disability. Other than that, there's some tweaks to the language. You're still required to provide a reason, if it's a personal reason, for not participating in person and that sort of thing. But the outline is similar to past years. Oh, yeah, Ellen, let me also don't forget to tell you that you have to adopt this every year.
Of course. Okay, someone who has recently made use of the remote participation ordinance, I would... Their policy, I would do the revised policy in line with the version of the Commonwealth. That's second? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
But at that point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. That's Barbara's last name. More details will call about July social.
Home reform.
Of course. In case you haven't got it off your chest yet. Any comments from the public? Yes, ma'am?
You need better lighting and you need a better sound system. I know you didn't like the microphones, but you need something.
You're preaching to the choir. In July and August, we are going to be doing some rehab to Town Hall, some fresh paint, et cetera, and we're also going to be buying a new sound system. Okay, any other comments? Yes, sir?
Mr. Mayor, I wish to repeat myself on that subject and suggest that the town council earnestly consider whether to remove the pulpit from behind you and replace it with a raised platform on which the council table could be, which would improve both sight lines for the public and the audio reception. I'll stop there since I'm repeating myself.
I appreciate it. Just in case we didn't feel high and mighty enough. All right. With that, I will close the public comment, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn. All right, second? I know Gene's ready to get out of here.
I'm ready.
All right. All in favor of adjourned, then please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, same July.